Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:36. First up on the agenda, roll call.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Here.
Lou Savage.
Here.
Deanna Rigsby.
Here.
And Chairman Ryan Jones.
Here. Next up, approval of the July 21st, 2025 minutes. Did you ever get a chance to look at those?
Yes.
You have approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved to seconded and further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Comments from citizens. This is the time for anyone to address the Planning Commission on matters that are not on the agenda. It doesn't look like there's any. Old business, none. New business. Item A, applicant's request. Applicant requests Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit and site design review for the property located at northeast corner of Oak Avenue and Sherman Street. Is this where I gotta read this? I never remember.
Um, is this where you read this script?
Is this where I gotta read this whole long spiel?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Some cities that I've worked with, it's not that long, but here it is, and it covers everything, so you won't miss on any particular item.
We gotta do it right. Okay. Introduction and open the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we are holding a public hearing regarding application number 2507-01CUP and 2507-02SDR. Chairman Jones. For Amity School District at Tax Lot, R5420DC07800. Chairman Jones, can I just have you tilt the microphone down towards? Thank you. Now I lost my place. Sorry. This is a quasi judicial process, unlike in legislative hearings where personal opinion may come into play. Quasi judicial rulings must be grounded in the relevant code and other approval criteria. If the application meets the code and other approval criteria of the city, the commission must approve it. The hearing will proceed as follows. We will first address some preliminary legal matters. Then the staff will make a presentation introducing the application that is before us. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their application. Then members of the audience will be given the opportunity to speak. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. I now call to order the public hearing. The time is 6:38. We will now cover the preliminary legal matters. Legal matters. Burden of proof, criteria, and appeal rights. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the City of Amity's Development Code and any other applicable municipal code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are listed in the staff report. All testimony and evidence that the speakers give us must concern the approval criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the Development Code or Comprehensive Plan that the person testifying believes should apply to the decision. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign and submit a public testimony sheet before the hearing is closed by the chair. Only those who have appeared before the commission in person or in writing will have standing to appeal this item to the city council. Before the conclusion of the first public evidentiary hearing on this application, any participant may request a continuance or ask that the record be left open to present additional information that is within the scope of the hearing. If there is a request, the Planning Commission will either continue the public hearing by scheduling a date and time to finish the hearing, a continuance, or leave the record open for at least seven days for additional written evidence, argument, or testimony. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with sufficient detail to give the Planning Commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue means that no appeal may be made to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the Planning Commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Before we have the staff report, I will ask a few questions of the members of the commission and then the audience. Does any member of the commission wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias?
No.
So this is for the Amity School District. I am on the Amity School Board. But I didn't even...
The conflict of interest is a... Thank you. Is a financial thing. If you're gonna make money based on your vote tonight, then that could be a potential or an actual conflict, but obviously, a board member of the school district isn't gonna have money coming in your pocket regardless of how you vote.
Yeah. I don't make any money being on the school board. Trust me. Does any member of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? I've been at the school. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the Planning Commission? If somebody did, I could quit and you guys could take... That concludes the legal matters. Testimony tonight will be in the following order. Presentation of the staff report, presentation of the applicant, presentation of the proponents, presentation of opponents, testimony of neutral parties including government bodies, rebuttal by the applicant limited to issues raised by opponents. We'll now proceed to the staff presentation and the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I am not going to go over this in detail because you've had a week to take a look through it, but obviously, on the first page, it has a lot of the basic information. The one thing that I will mention orally tonight is about in the middle of the page, Item E, request. And the request is that the applicant proposes to remove the two existing modular buildings at the northeast corner of Oak and Sherman Streets and replace them with a one-story forty-eight, excuse me, forty-two foot by sixty-eight foot or 2,850 square foot modular building for the Amity School District offices. The existing four-space parking area immediately north of the existing modulators is proposed to be expanded with three new parking spaces, and that would give the entire site a total of 140 spaces. The conditions of approval from the 2023 Concurrent Conditional Use Permit and Site Design Review applications remain in effect. So for those of you that were on the commission two years ago in 2023, when the, so to speak, original conditional use permit and site development review applications were turned in to do the major remodeling and add more for the mid-school and all the parking lot changes and things, then there were several conditions of approval related to that, and those stay in effect. So I'm moving on to page two, and it has a copy of the zoning map in this area. Shows the school property in the R1 Zone and to the north and south in the R1 Zone. The area across Oak Street to the west is in the R2 Zone, and this specific project area is in the southwest corner of the campus. So on the, across Savage Street is R1 Zone to the south, and across Oak Street to the west is R2 zoning. Now, the next page has an air photo, and if you look in the lower left corner of the school district property, there's a couple of modulators. They're oriented east-west, and those will be removed. And the replacement, as shown on page four, will be put in that area, and it's primarily a north-to-south building. And then the site plan on page four shows the parking in the existing small parking lot, and that that parking lot will be added on, or three new spaces will be added on. So the existing parking lot is the drive aisle, and then on your right side or to the east, there's one van-accessible ADA space, another regular ADA space, and then another, whatever, regular normal parking spot. And on the west side is where the fourth existing space is. And from reading the application materials, they apparently missed out that that was there, and so they were thinking there's only three spaces and that they would add four on the west side of the drive aisle. And the square footage added up to more than 5,000 square feet, and that kicked in a storm drain situation that the city engineers commented on. But based on that, I reminded the applicant that there is a fourth space on the west side, that they're not adding four new, they're only adding three new, and those three new ones do not come up to the 5,000 square foot trigger that calls for some storm drain work. So the city engineer, the applicant, and all of us now are on the same wavelength for that little detail. So basically, the setbacks are okay. There are more than the 15 feet from the front property line along Oak Avenue, and there are more than 15 feet from the front, or the side yard adjacent to a street along Sherman Street. And I double-checked this site plan because based on the two-year-ago decision, the district has to dedicate 13 feet of right-of-way along Oak Street to make the Oak Street right-of-way wider. And so the property line that's shown on the site plan shows the new, after the 13-foot dedication, property line location. And even with that, the building is actually something like 19 feet from that front property line. So the other couple of things that have led to a couple of conditions of approval is on the south side, next to Sherman, pardon me, on the east side, next to Sherman, there's a couple of fir trees, conifers, and a deciduous tree, and the application calls for all three of those to be cut down because with the new building, the long axis oriented north-south, the trees would be about two feet away from the building wall. And so there's a condition of approval that says, okay, if you're gonna cut down three trees, then replace with three trees. And the yard, the setback from the south wall to the new property line along Sherman is roughly 24 feet. So if you plant the trees kind of in between the wall and the property line, that would make the trees 12 feet from the building, 12 feet from the property line. In the northwest part of the little project area where the parking is, the, there's two white bark, I don't know if they're birch or beech or what, but there's a couple of white bark trees that are right along Oak Street, and then there's a third one that's in a bit. And for the existing parking, as you come in off of Oak and then you make an immediate right to come into the parking lot, there's only the one parking lot or parking space on the west side, and the rest of it is landscape and has a nice mature white bark tree there. But because the location of the tree is gonna be a parking space, and also, I'm not sure, so I didn't put it in the report, but it looks like from what's out there with the trenching and digging around and everything, it looks like there might be some kind of a storm drain line that has been running right under that tree. But anyway, that tree is completely gone already, and...
You mean it's dead?
Pardon me?
You mean it's dead?
Yeah, that, well, that tree is not dead. It's just physically not there anymore. If you went to look at it, you'd be looking at thin air.
Okay.
So the two trees along the west side, there's one to the south and one to the north. The one to the north had sometime in the past already been pruned pretty heavily because there's some power lines up overhead and a power pole pretty close. And then during the construction, a major branch coming out kind of to the northeast got whacked, hit, broken off, and you know, sometimes how it comes off and you get a whole lot of bark coming with it. So that tree, an arborist, I'm sure, would say is a goner in the long run. So there's a condition talking about putting in a tree there to replace that one, and I'd have to look. I forget if there's a, if the condition includes two trees because two trees are gonna go away, or if it's just replacing one tree. So that is about it in terms of issues that have led to conditions of approval. The comments by the city engineers were not related to anything really substantive. They were detailed items relating to the engineered plans that came in for this, and there were four items, and the plans showed whatever they showed, but it was not consistent with what the Public Works Design Standards say. So in the case of some water sewer, storm drain, pipes, the city engineer said, yeah, you need to follow what the Public Works Design Standards say, not what we're showing on the plans. So with that, I'm just gonna fast forward to where the conditions of approval are, and I don't intend on going through all of those, but from your reading through, you probably noticed that a lot of the conditions are pretty general, like comply with all the applicable standards, that sort of thing. And then there's a few that are specific, and for example, on page 19 of the staff report, Condition of Approval Number 10.
Did I have to bend this before you? I did not get this either.
I did not either.
I am looking at this for the first time.
Yeah.
It should have been in the agenda packet.
What agenda packet? Like what we have right now? The papers that were sitting right here?
No, it was emailed to you. It was a whole packet that had everything in it.
I didn't get it.
When did you email it?
Yeah, typically, the packet has an agenda as the first page.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and then minutes in the staff report, the applicant's...
I understand. I understand. When did you send it?
So anyway, on that page, it specifically lists the four comments by the city engineer.
It would have been last Tuesday.
The last Tuesday?
Sorry, I'm trying to think. It would have been last Tuesday when we sent it out.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You guys didn't get it either?
No.
So I'm not gonna scroll through this.
You may have missed sending it out.
Okay.
Because I have it in the file. I can send it right now, but...
Oh, I can't because I'm home?
I know we posted the agenda, but... Yeah, I apologize. I don't know.
Do you want to send it real quick so we have it in front of us and we can...
I, yeah.
I thought we were just doing the comprehensive plan tonight. This is what, I was thinking, wow, this is all news to me.
I can photocopy it really quick for the staff report.
That'd be better. It'd be easier for me to see.
Yeah. That would be more helpful.
Let me... Yeah, do you want, let me run and print it? Or do you have a copy?
I do. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, if you don't receive stuff, definitely call City Hall and let them know because we tried to get it out a week ahead of time.
We didn't know it was even on the agenda, so there's nothing to like ask for when we didn't know it was coming.
But go ahead and go with your...
Yeah, I'm fine with going through it. I just wanted to...
Yeah, go through it, and then we'll have it in front of us when you...
So Condition of Approval 10 on page 19 has A, B, C, D, which are the four city engineer Little farther down on page 19 is Condition of Approval 12. It has A and B, which are the parking lot landscaping trees-related conditions. And then on the top of page 13, there's some other landscaping requirements in the code, and basically, it's just saying, submit a landscape plan that shows compliance with the landscape requirements. And I will mention, because the applicant called today, and one of the landscaping requirements says, prior to building permits, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan which complies with the Amity Development Code. And then the next two say, prior to final occupancy, and the third one is again, the prior to final occupancy. And the applicant, Brittany from Brand Land Use, is the name of the company. She asked that the first landscape condition of approval also be tied to occupancy rather than prior to building permits.
Submit a plan.
Yeah.
Submit a plan submitted.
Right. Submit a plan showing the landscaping that you should have submitted to begin with and showing all the things, but if you're tying the condition to submit the landscape plan prior to building permits, then when they get ready to install this modular, turn in their building permit before the county could issue the building permit to start construction, they would have to turn in the updated or the landscape plan. If you wait until occupancy, where pretty much everything's done, and then the final inspection occurs and they're ready to issue an occupancy permit, if at that point the landscape plan needs to be submitted, submitted, then that's months and months later. They just have a lot more time to do it. The issue might be that they turn in the plan and then they never get around to hiring a landscaper to install what the plan shows. And with the occupancy permit having been issued, the city doesn't have a real good lever to...
To get it done.
Make sure that that landscaping gets installed, but I would think with it being the school district, they're not going to fail to install some landscaping. So anyway, I assume that Brittany will mention that during her testimony. So that is the end of my staff report. The staff recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit to allow an office in the R1 Zone, and then approve the site development review to allow the placement of the modular with the landscaping and parking.
Does anybody have any more questions?
I've got some questions, but I'll be more direct.
You want to wait, wait till that? Okay.
Sorry about that, guys. I don't know. We just missed it between Mona and I guess, so, yeah, but she's got them. They'll be printed pretty fast, so.
Sure, we could go on. If you don't have questions about the staff report...
We don't have them, we don't have them yet, but once we get them in front of us. But yeah, if you want to go on to the presentation of the applicant and then come back, I'm fine with that. Okay, we'll move on to the presentation of the applicant.
Yeah. I guess it's Brittany.
Yeah. Brittany, I do have you here. Can, can we hear you? Can...
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, you're talking. I don't know if my speaker's going to the right, oh, my speaker's not going to the right place. Give me just a second. Okay, try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Wonderful.
I have your presentation, Brittany. Do you want me to just put it up and click through it, or do you want to like share your screen on Zoom or...
Yeah, I'm all ready to share my screen, and I think that'd be helpful for, I see two folks on Zoom here. If you all can see it in the room and that works for you, I'd be happy to share my screen.
I've got it, I've got it up there, so we should be able to see it in the room now.
Okay, and I'm just gonna send a request to you to be able to share. Looks like I don't have permission yet.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mona.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. Well, good evening, commissioners. For your record, my name is Brittany Randall. I am the owner and principal planner of Brand Land Use. My office is located at 1720 Liberty Street Southeast in Salem. I'm here on behalf of the Amity School District and our project team, and I just want to start by thanking staff. They've been so wonderful and collaborative, which has led us to this point. I'm so sorry that y'all didn't receive the materials, and I prepared kind of a brief presentation tonight because we submitted what I feel is a lot of testimony to the record. We responded thoroughly to all of the approval criteria, and then also, we did receive a copy of Jim's very thorough staff report. So happy to answer questions, understanding that, commissioners, you all are bringing yourselves up to speed really quickly this evening, and happy to work through that with you. So just wanted to say thank you to staff. Briefly, I'll introduce our team. The applicant is the Amity School District. I again am Brittany Randall. The civil engineer that we utilized on this project is Josh Wells of West Tech Engineering. And then our architect is Angela Flores of Facet Architects. So just a site overview, and I know many of you are familiar with this site, but this is the Amity High School campus. It's nearly 30 acres in size and has been a central part of your community. The area we're focusing on is located at the corner of Oak and Sherman Streets, just like Jim stated. I've put a pink star right over the site there for your viewing pleasure. We are proposing to remove the two existing modular buildings, and I think our wires are a little crossed. We are proposing a stick-site building, or a site-built-stick building. So there may have been a point in time where we were replacing modular with modular because that was my initial understanding of our presentation, but the architect has corrected me that it will be a site-built building. Nothing else is different, so the footprint and everything that we've prepared to show you is all the same. We believe this location is well-suited for the district office use as it's already integrated into the site for these reasons. So in the materials that you'll be receiving any second now, or maybe you already have them, you'll see on page four of the staff report, our proposed site layout. And of course, Jim went through that for us. Our proposal is straightforward, but it's meaningful. We're replacing the two outdated modular buildings with a new permanent office building designed to serve the district long-term. The new structure is slightly smaller than what it replaces, but it's designed for efficiency, accessibility, and long-term use. And as Jim described, we are modestly expanding the parking lot to accommodate just a few more spaces and improving the site circulation and landscaping to improve the functionality and appearance of this corner of the campus. The application requires both a conditional use permit and site design review, and staff has already provided you with a thorough analysis of how the project meets the standards, but we want to emphasize that this project isn't about expanding the footprint of the campus or increasing impacts. We're just replacing existing temporary buildings with a permanent investment that we believe will better serve the students, the family, and the community. The proposal is consistent with the city's plans and policies with the proposed conditions of approval. There were those discrepancies in our engineering documents that needed to be addressed through those conditions of approval, so we appreciate Jim's... So we appreciate Jim's collaboration with your Public Works Department to ensure that we do meet those requirements for Amity. The district has already completed some significant campus upgrades in recent years. And this project is just the next step in making sure the facilities are reflecting the importance of education in your community. Jim touched on this in his presentation. We were hoping to have a discussion with commissioners about two revisions to conditions of approval. We had submitted after reviewing the staff report and understanding, oh, my goodness, we have a discrepancy between our architectural site plan and our surfacing plan. Our surfacing plan from our civil engineer had calculated that we were replacing much more impervious surface than we intend to. And so we were originally in the staff report rightfully triggering some green stormwater infrastructure requirements. But we've since presented the city with updated surfacing plans that are in the record demonstrating that we are below the five thousand square foot threshold. So we're hoping to have a condition that would maybe broadly say, you know, following green stormwater infrastructure requirements. Should we breach that five thousand square foot threshold? I think that's a good way of the city sort of intent, you know, making sure your requirements are met. But then allowing us to provide new and better information to you as well. And then condition thirteen, Jim also touched on this. So this is kind of an interesting one. Our current project team is not, we haven't been hired for landscaping. That's not in our scope of work. And so what we're, how we're trying to resolve this issue is if we could, if we could say that even temporary occupancy. So no occupancy can take place in the building until landscape plans are submitted and approved. That would allow the school district to sort of detach from this scope of work that we have and go and and get their landscaping done under some other more probably appropriate consultants like a landscape architect. It's not dire. If y'all are more comfortable with the condition, reading how it does now, we can certainly work that out with the school district. This was just something that we were asked to see if the planning commission would be amenable to. And I think the way to sort of meet in the middle is to have the condition say that even temporary occupancy wouldn't be granted. So there'd be no occupancy of the building prior to review and approval of landscape permits. And then I would close with saying that ultimately, this project is about reinvestment in the Amity community. It does replace the outdated temporary structures with permanent office that reflects the pride that Amity has in its schools. It strengthens the campus both functionally and visually, and it benefits students, family, and staff for years to come. So I want to thank you again and your staff for your time and your thorough review of our materials. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Oh, let's see. So I have a couple of questions. So is the, is the district planning on replacing the trees one for one?
Yes, we have, we have no issue with that condition to replace the trees that are proposed to be removed. The excavation requires impeding more than fifty percent into the critical root protection zone. So I think we would be severely complicating the life of those trees. And it makes more sense to replace them with new trees. And so we're absolutely amenable to those conditions, yes.
Okay. And just in terms of traffic, do you have any sense or does the district have any sense of how, how much traffic that office will create?
Yeah, so the buildings, they're, they're, they're not increasing in size, they're actually decreasing in size. No new open positions or jobs will be created. There's no additional square footage to add more people. So I think that the traffic that you'll see will remain consistent with what you see today. And the addition of the three parking spaces, I think, just increases the site functionality. And lessens the potential of overflow parking in the streets of neighboring neighborhoods.
So what about the actual visitors? I mean, putting aside the parking spaces. I'm assuming that people will come to the office, whether it's parents or other folks to meet with, you know, the people who work at the district office. Do you have any sense of what that is going to look like?
I, I don't. I don't think I have a good answer for you. I imagine that it would function just how it does today. But I'm happy to get more information from the school district, if that would be helpful to you all.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the, for me, the question is, is it going to increase the, is it going to increase the traffic around the neighborhood significantly?
Okay, so, so from my, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've been doing land use for a long time. And I would say the answer to that is no. We're decreasing the building's capacity. So I would say that this is actually a surefire way of not increasing the impacts to the neighborhood as far as traffic is concerned.
If I could add to that, it might be that people would more frequently go to the principal's office at the high school or mid-school rather than go to the school district office where the superintendent would be. Not that some people won't be going there. But the site overall has, I think it was fifteen spaces more based on the required parking. And the little wrinkle with that is the required parking is based on the number of classrooms. So it isn't a parking requirement based on the square footage of offices. So it would appear that with fifteen extra spaces and most people, whether it's students or staff, I assume would like to park as close to the building as possible. And with this office being far away from the school buildings, these eight or seven spaces will probably be used all the time. And then just across the little drive aisle to the north, there's more parking spaces. And to the east, abutting the building is a brand new parking lot. It's been a gravel lot, I guess, in the past, but it's all paved and striped for, I don't know, thirty spaces or something like that.
I was speaking, I was actually speaking more to the number of cars on the street. I mean, are we talking like every day, is it fifty more cars? Is it twenty more cars? Is it, you know, ten more cars?
There's, there's four people that work at the district office, so there'll be four cars going to that new district office.
And anybody else who wants to, that was actually, that was actually the heart of my question. But as you talk, it's probably, it's probably not significant, given the fact that there's plenty of cars from the high school anyway. So it's probably not insignificant anyways.
And it'll probably be busier when school starts and then taper off and then get really busy towards what, summer? When they realize their kids aren't graduating, then it'll get busy again.
No, I get it. Okay, no, that's helpful.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a quick question, Brittany. On the PowerPoint presentation, it has a, I guess you could call it an artist's rendition of a building. Is this likely to be somewhat similar to the actual building that would be constructed?
No, no, thank you. That is artistic in nature only. The building will be single story and small in stature, like we show with a small parking lot. But no, I was just trying not to violate too many PowerPoint rules and throw in a little image here and there to not make people go blind and stir crazy with all the words that I put on there.
Okay, thank you. I thought I would ask.
So it's not going to look like the image?
It may have characteristics like the image, but I actually haven't seen any elevations. So those will be in the works and those will come through for review and approval. Yeah.
And just a quick comment before we move on to other testimony. With the proposal to not be a modular and instead to be a stick built. I don't know if it's the same footprint and same shape and so forth. But I guess we could ask if the stick built or site built would be the same two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six square feet. And what is it, twenty-six, oops, excuse me. A one-story forty-two by sixty-eight foot building. Because if the shape of the building changes, then we would want a revised site plan showing the shape of the building and what the site setbacks are.
That was my question, whether the change of stick to modular was then going to have to change any of the, your setback feet stuff? And then it is only one building, correct, and not two separate ones? Because two are going down and one's going up.
Yeah.
You mean under the five thousand feet or, or water line needs to be put in, right?
Parking lot, the impervious area added to the parking lot, as well as I guess the existing parking lot. If it exceeds five thousand square feet, that kicks in some storm drain stuff. But the building, if it's going to be stick built, then who knows? It might not be the dimensions that were proposed and we're all thinking about and knowing that all the setbacks will be met. So I would recommend that the commission include a condition of approval requiring a revised site plan so that we can see the shape and size of the building and know for sure that the setbacks are met.
Yeah.
And that it won't get in the way of any new trees to be planted or things like that.
Yeah, so during my presentation, I'm sorry, I must have glossed over that too quickly. But the site plan that we have proposed is correct for a site built building. So nothing will change. And we do have a condition in there from you, Jim, that we, that you've proposed, that we prepare a revised site plan that meets all the conditions of approval. So that will happen. We will make those changes based on whatever conditions imposed by the commission here. And then everything else is, is correct. So including the, the layout of the building that we've shown. So we've shown the floor plan on our site plan. All of that will remain the same.
Thank you, because with that, then I will withdraw the request to have a condition of approval requiring a revised site plan be submitted.
We'd be amenable to that if, if that is where the comfort level lies with the commission. Because we have to provide that anyway, based on probably likely the conditions that will be adopted here. Happy to have that as a condition, too.
So the change to landscaping condition that you propose.
I can't hear that commissioner, I'm so sorry.
Can you hear me now?
No. Okay, that's probably a little bit.
I can hear you now, thank you.
So the change to the commission, to the condition for the landscape design that you propose is to have the plans submitted prior to temp occupancy. But then are we going to keep in there that the actual installation needs to be completed prior to final? Or within six months if a security is filed with the city?
Yeah, I mean, you, you certainly could keep the remaining, I mean, all the conditions can remain however you all feel that they should, should read. But what we were asking was that, that the landscape plan not be tied to the building permit for the reasons that I shared as far as scope of work. If you wanted to require the other conditions to trigger prior to temporary occupancy, I think that's certainly within your right to do that. Does that answer your question?
I guess, so I mean, what you're hoping is that the, any landscaping conditions will be removed from this what we're doing here so that you're, that's not a part of.
Well, just, just under condition thirteen where it says prior to building permit issuance. I was hoping that that timeline would be triggered prior to temporary occupancy. So that we, our team can go and get our building permit and potentially start site work while the school district hires their landscape architect to, to refine those plans that meet, meet these conditions of approval. Just giving them a little bit more flexibility in their timeline. It's, it's of course not, it's not dire. It just requires additional conversations between us and the school district to work out that timeline. So we're just asking if the commission's amenable to it, but it's certainly not a deal breaker.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for accommodating the virtual meeting. I don't like to do this, I like to be in person, but I am also an eagle point for a public hearing. And I couldn't manage to be in two places at once.
Any other questions of the presentation? So now we'll move on to public, public testimony, right? People that are for it and against it. Do we need to declare a time limit for testimony? Is anybody going to get up in filibuster and rail on for hours? Okay, I won't worry about that then. All speakers, before speaking, please clearly state your full name and mailing address and physical address as well, if you like. If you have any written material or other evidence you would like us to see, please hand it to staff. The staff will distribute it to members of the commission and the applicant as well as place it in the record for this hearing. I think I read the wrong thing, but anyway, so first up, we have presentation of proponents. Anybody want to speak in favor of this? No? Presentation of opponents, anyone want to speak against this? No? What are you guys doing here? Are there any additional opponents? Any neutral parties? No? Okay. Rebuttal by the applicant, you don't need that because nobody said anything. Does any party request to continue this public hearing? Lou, nothing? No? Does the staff have any further comments or clarifications regarding this application?
I don't unless there's questions from the commission.
No. Does any member of the commission have any questions for the staff? The public hearing is now closed. The chair will now open discussion for deliberations by the commission. Commission members may also ask clarifying questions of staff. Does any member of the commission wish to comment or make a motion?
So I feel pretty strongly that we ought to hold the district to the landscaping requirement. I just feel like there's, you know, with all good intention, there's the opportunity for slippage. And as we all know, the longer you wait to plant trees, you know, you know, it could, it could slip a season or two if we, if we don't have a definite time limit. So I, I feel pretty strongly that we ought to keep what we have originally required.
Any other questions or comments?
Is it okay if I clarify?
Yeah.
On that, so Jim, just for my reference, there, there's two different phases to landscaping. There's the installation and then the plan submitted. There's the installation and then the plan submitted, right? And so would changing the plans middle to prior to temporary occupancy? That doesn't change the fact that they still have to have it all installed before they can get final occupancy, right?
Right, yeah, your typical thing is you have a plan showing what landscape is going to be where. And then, once that's approved, then that set of plans can be used to hire a consultant or contractor. They see what they need to do and they go out and do it. So the proposed condition thirteen A says prior to building permits. That's me to me, that means before the building permit is issued, that landscape plan would need to be submitted. But then thirteen B says all the landscaping that's required has to be installed prior to final occupancy. And to me, then let me back up. I use some of these terms like prior to building permit and prior to final occupancy permit from the decision two years ago. So to me, the requirement prior to building permit means prior to building permit issuance. And prior to final occupancy permit means prior to the final occupancy permit. It might be before the final that they get a temporary to occupy some part of the building or something. And then eventually they would get the final occupancy. So conditions thirteen B and C say, yep, it's got to be installed before you get your final occupancy. And then the question is, does the landscape plan need to be turned in before the permits issued, before any of the real construction for the office building begins? Or can it be turned in later prior to the final occupancy? And so Commissioner Savage is suggesting just leave it as it is. And if that's the case, then as the plans for the building are being drawn up and getting ready to submit for the building permit. And then there's, I don't know what the time lag is in Manhill County Building Department, but often it's a few weeks or a couple of months, once the permit's turned in before they issue the permit. So as that all is happening, some landscape consulting firm can prepare the landscape plan and get that turned in so that when the county's ready to issue the permit, that plan will be in and then the building will be built. And typically, they don't do the landscaping until toward the end of construction because there's just too much going on and tractors backfilling and all kinds of things. And so, once the building is pretty well done, that's when the landscape contractor comes in and puts in the landscaping. So having them turn the landscape plan in before building permits are issued should give them enough time to get that plan turned in.
And and if there is slippage, it's not going to come back to us.
Right.
That's why I would like it to be nailed down now.
Is there a projected date for final occupancy at this point?
No.
No.
There generally isn't a final date unless somebody has a decent sized project and the final date is two or three, four years down the road.
So there there is no deadline?
They'll say, yeah, we'll be in by July of twenty thirty.
Oh, contractors always come in, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The school district probably doesn't even have a contractor signed on the line to build this office building. And we know for sure they don't have a landscape architect hired to do the plan. So it's.
So there is no final deadline for or or hard deadline for final occupancy?
Yeah, it's hard to know when the final occupancy will be and when the contractor will first get out on the site. And if these old modulars have any asbestos in them, I don't know how they old they really are, but just getting them off the site is a problem because you can't take it off the site until you have a place to put it. That's, I think, a DEQ regulation or something. So there's, I don't know how many weeks or months it'll be before the modulars go away, but there's a lot of time left to happen.
Well, I'm just going to agree with Commissioner Savage on that. Let's just leave it as is. It might be a little more like work for the school board or the school district, I mean, but, you know, it it can't hurt to leave it in some.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
All right, you ready for motion?
If you're ready.
I motion to approve the concurrent conditional use permit and site design review land use applications files. Hashtag two five oh seven dash zero one CUP and hashtag two five oh seven dash zero two SDR and adopt the findings and recommended conditions of approval included in the staff report to the planning commission.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, this is a final decision by the planning commission. This decision may be appealed to. We got to fix that. This decision may be appealed by those withstanding to the city council within twelve days after the mailing of the signed final decision. Thank you all who have testified tonight. Your comments have been very helpful, which is.
And I would just comment that the decision oral tonight is not a final decision because the decision actually has to be as the legal beagle, if I can say Lou, write it down. They say it has to be in writing and signed. So we'll get the decision document, get it signed and send out a notice that the decision is has been signed. And then it'll say what the appeal period deadline is for the applicant or, well, no one testified, so there wouldn't be anyone withstanding. Consequently, the appeal step is irrelevant in this case.
So do we need to change that on the little speech that I got to read every time that so it's not a final decision? Or this is almost final decision?
For most everybody, what they hear tonight is the final decision. And what they heard tonight will be put in writing. It won't be changed or anything. So in effect, what they're hearing is the final. It's just the so-called bureaucratic step of putting it in writing and getting it signed and then issued.
Okay.
Can I ask one question of you, Jim? With no revision to the stormwater condition, do you think it's written in a way that because we're not triggering it that that will be resolved?
Why, good question. I did not bring the decision from two years ago. But this afternoon, the city engineers, myself and Nathan had our usual every other week development coordination meeting. And the city engineers thought that the way the condition was written was, in effect, if it's more than five thousand, then you deal with the storm. But if it's less, then you would not have to deal with the storm water situation.
We may have more discussions about that then. I I think you're right, though. I'm looking at that here and I I'm hoping that it's if you trigger it, it meets the requirements. If you don't trigger it, you don't need to worry about it.
Yeah, and if the city's standard for stormwater or to address stormwater is that you have to have five thousand square feet or more, and this project ends up with less because you're only adding three spaces rather than four, then I think it would be hard for the city to say, yeah, our standard is five, but you have to deal with the stormwater anyway.
Okay.
Reasons to have a standard is so that that's what applies.
I, Brittany, I I'm not as experienced as Jim, but reading this myself, I see the condition of approval is for the applicant to perform revisions to a civil plan and submit a plan that demonstrates compliance with the city of engineer comments. And then the city of engineer comment is just that any structures or or any any plans or any projects with an impervious area over five thousand square feet will trigger stormwater improvements, not that your specific project has to meet stormwater requirements.
Okay, okay, I think my anxiousness just stems from us sort of leading the city down this path that we had fifty two hundred square feet of impervious and that was our mistake. So if we can resolve that in a building permit application, then we're totally square here.
I think you're totally fine. When you submit that revised site plan, it'll be under the five thousand square feet and you'll be just fine.
We'll make that very clear. Okay, well, thank you so much for everyone's time and and review of our application. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for zooming in.
Thanks.
All right, that's over and done with. We'll move on to the work session. Item A, comprehensive plan update, review and discuss the work completed to date.
Yes, I suppose this is kind of my turn. Thank you. I hope that this means that everyone is here for this, which is is great.
I had no idea. I thought you guys were all mad about the building.
So just as a kind of a a brief background, I I want this to be a work session. I want it to be a discussion. I tried getting my slides down to to be really fast, but I think it's going to take me longer than like a fifteen minute presentation. So instead of trying to get through the presentation and then go back through things, I think it'll be best if we just, if you have questions, if you have comments, if you have thoughts, if you want to sit and discuss one particular goal or or portion of the comp plan, just interrupt me and we'll stop and talk about it.
And does that go for the audience, too? If they like, this is just an open session. If we, if you have a question, maybe don't shout, just raise your hand and we'll we'll answer your question.
And say it's it's your meeting, so you can run out you want, but that's.
Not my meeting, I don't know what I'm doing.
So just to provide kind of a quick background, the city of Amity, we've been working on our comprehensive plan update for the last about about a year and a half. I believe I got a grant from DLCDE last, well, it would have been October of twenty twenty three when the city of Amity was awarded that grant. Took me a few months to, you know, find a consultant to help and to kind of organize the project moving forward. This this picture is from Amity Day twenty twenty four. That was kind of our kickoff public engagement session or or one of our first times that we engaged with the community about the plan. And so it's been really the last year since since July of twenty twenty four that we've been working on this and and putting it together. The comprehensive plan is intended to guide activities and decisions related to land use in the city of Amity. Our our original plan is from nineteen seventy nine, when they were required by the state. Basically, the state went through and and said, everybody has to create a comprehensive plan, and Amity did so in nineteen seventy nine. And it hasn't really been touched since then. We've had a couple of small updates, right? In twenty fifteen, we did an economic opportunities analysis and kind of updated the the economic development portion of the comprehensive plan. Also, in twenty fifteen, we put together a transportation system plan that included some updates to the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan. But really, it's meant, the comprehensive plan itself is meant to be kind of an overarching document that takes in, you know, state guidelines, state rules, but also community aspirations. What do what do the people of Amity want Amity to grow into over the next twenty years? Do you want to see growth? Do you not? Do you want to see more businesses? Are there certain industries you want to see? Is it specific types of housing? Is it affordable housing? Are there? Are there ideas about open space or recreational programs that are really important or perhaps the environment? All of that, the hope is that it's compiled into this comprehensive plan that then guides kind of our work over the next twenty years. I I got a great question from Commissioner Savage about are these goals aspirational or or are we really like working towards these? My answer would be that largely they're aspirational. A lot of them are going to be a bit too big for us to take on at any one time. But the hope is that when city council sets up their strategic plan every two years, they're looking at the comprehensive plan and saying, okay, what of these items can we work towards?
So I guess my, I appreciate your answering that. And I guess my question is I would be concerned if some of the goals in the plan are actually unachievable. You know, I mean, we actually should not have those in the in the in the goals. I mean, it's one thing to say it'll take us seven years or six years and we can't do it all at once. You know, we have, I I totally get that. But if if we are putting something in there either to make LCDC happy or to make us feel good and it's actually unachievable, I think that's a bad idea.
I I'm in agreement. That that sounds right. We we, I want this to be a document that is workable so that people actually refer back to it, right? Because if it's a bunch of unachievable ideals, you put it on a shelf and you kind of forget about it, right? And you say, well, I'm going to deal with what's in front of me. I think there's also a tendency or or desire for some of these goals though to be just vague enough that if an opportunity arises in ten years, right, that we couldn't have foreseen grant funding or something else. Right? I I think, for an example, one of the recreational planning goals is to acquire park site land ahead of where the need is, right? That means that it it's vague enough that I can kind of look at, you know, look throughout the city and say, okay, what land is available? Maybe I'm not going out and pursuing the purchase of land. But if one pops up and it might make a good park space, right, I bring it back to the planning commission and the city council and say, hey, does this meet what we're talking about? But, yes, we keep it vague enough that city staff and council and planning commission can kind of interpret it the way they want or or the way that makes sense at the time. But I completely agree with you that unachievable goals don't help us at all.
Yeah, I mean, there's economic issues, there's political issues that would be a barrier to some of these. But if if we're looking at them as being, yeah, we could achieve this given the right circumstances. I'm fine with that.
Let's see here. Kind of a little diagram just shows where the comprehensive plan fits, right? It takes in the statewide stuff, the Oregon administrative rules, hopefully, community input and aspirations. Then it's implemented through those local ordinances, right? We, the way we work towards our comprehensive plan is through the Amity Development Code, through city ordinances that are going to step us in that direction. So the first goal of well, let me back up just a little bit. So the the state of Oregon puts out statewide planning goals. And there's, how many are there, Jim?
Nineteen in total.
Nineteen in total.
We don't have to worry about some of them because they're coastal goals. One of them's the Willamette River Greenway, and we're not on the Willamette River, so we have fourteen left to deal with.
Yeah, not thankfully, not all of them are applicable. The first one, though, is citizen involvement, right? The state says that we really want to make sure that citizens can be involved in our planning process, right? This isn't just a city staff member. This isn't just Nathan saying, hey, how how should Amity look in twenty years? And no, I don't want a Walmart or yes, I do want, you know, whatever it is, right? Not going to say anything too controversial, but it's not just one person, it's not just a few people. It's meant to be the community. And one of the ways we kind of make sure that the community is involved. And one of the ways we kind of make sure that the community is involved is through this it it calls it the the citizen well, it calls it the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Um, and and the comp plan designates the planning commission to serve as that committee for citizen involvement. Basically, the objective becomes to implement and regularly review the effectiveness of the citizen involvement program. Um, and I, in my mind, that or in my interpretation, that's just an obligation on the planning commission to occasionally look at our land use process and say, are people involved in it? Are there ways that we could get more people involved? Are there ways that certain people are excluded? How can we kind of help with that? There was a question about some text in the comprehensive plan about the Citizen Advisory Committee. The the Citizen Advisory Committee was formed just for the development of the comprehensive plan update. It was a separate committee that that we put together um that had, you know, a business member from the community, um, somebody from Thousand Friends of Oregon. I'm trying to think of who else was represented. City Council had a representative on there.
So that will not remain as a separate entity?
No.
Only during this?
Yep.
And essentially, planning committee then takes over some aspect of that role?
Yes, for the long term kind of review and just check in, it's the planning commission that that says are people involved in in land use planning enough? Do we need to change anything to make it more accessible? And and I think that that um priority can look a lot of a lot of different ways. We can certainly discuss more. Um, that's kind of where it sits right now. The next goal that we talk about is goal two, land use planning. It's basically just the state telling us that we have to establish a land use planning process uh and use clear and objective criteria and and basically just have this kind of process to talk about land use throughout the city. One of the questions that came up from a planning commissioner, from Commissioner Rigsby, um was when was the last review? And and I think this is looking at like zonings specifically. Um, and it because it talked about, one of the objectives was to phase out agricultural holdings. My answer is like, I don't know if we've held a specific review uh of zonings, but we have been, the the general city policy is trying to get those agricultural holding properties which are brought in from the U G B, but essentially, the city says we want you in the city limits, but you're still being used agriculturally, and we're not sure what you're going to be. So we're going to leave you as agricultural holding until we're ready to actually give you a zone. So we have been working to kind of phase that out. We're down to just a few properties on the east side of the city of Amity. Uh, I I wish I had time to put in a map, but just a few properties on the east side of the city of Amity that actually have that agricultural holding zone. It's typically typically properties that have just barely been annexed. But there were some long term holdouts. For example, the Amity Oaks development was an agricultural holding zone until somebody said, hey, I, because it was being used as an orchard, right, in the city limits. And and so when somebody finally said, hey, I want to put houses here, this the planning commission changed that zone to residential. Other policies under the goal to land use planning, generally, it's to encourage development patterns that minimize infrastructure costs, reduce energy consumption, its direction to, you know, coordinate public facilities and services to support existing and proposed land use patterns, encourage infill of the of developable lands within the planning area. In general, in Oregon, you're going to see a strong priority for building more or denser housing within city limits before expanding out and taking in agricultural land. And so basically, the the kind of goals and policies associated with goal two that we have in our comprehensive plan are to encourage that infill, encourage um more dense development patterns in certain zones, uh and then really to make sure that we're making the most use of our infrastructure.
A gentleman has a question.
Do you have an idea how many acres we have in agriculture in the city?
How many acres of agricultural holding?
Yeah.
Um, it's it's Yeah, it's not many. It's within city limits, I want to say it's only going to be a couple of acres. Yeah, a rough estimate, very rough estimate, but a couple of acres. Yes, not lots. Yeah. Anything else on kind of the goals with land use planning? We we jump a couple of goals, um, three and four. I I don't remember what those are at the statewide level, but
Ag and forestry.
Ag, which we uh we weren't too worried about at the city level. Um, I think those typically more apply to counties. But so goal five jumps into cultural and environmental resources. The policies listed here protect fish and wildlife habitats, preserve open spaces and scenic resources, um identify and preserve historic resources, designate natural drainage ways and prohibit stormwater flows that would exceed the natural flows, inventory and protect wetlands and riparian corridors. Basically, it it's focused on, you know, I I think there's some examples in there of encouraging use of historic buildings instead of just tearing them down and building something new. And and there's a lot of different policies, little, a lot of different subpolicies or little objectives that we can go about meeting these policies, but but these are the general ideas.
I might mention goal five is kind of a semi catchall. It has natural resources, you know, like riparian corridors and things, and then it has something completely different like historic resources. And so there's an administrative rule that the Land Conservation and Development Commission, the seven people appointed by the governor and confirmed by the state senate, they can adopt Oregon administrative rules. There's one for the natural resources part and or natural habitat part, and there's a different administrative rule for the historic resources. So the goals are the goals, but virtually every goal has an administrative rule that explains in greater detail what you need to do and how you do it so that you comply with that goal. And that's adopted by LCDC. Pardon me? And that's adopted by LCDC. Those those rules are adopted by LCDC. Yeah, just like the Oregon Transportation Commission, the Environmental Quality Commission, those citizen bodies have the authority to adopt what are called Oregon administrative rules.
I think the the wetland delineation was a was a really good example of one that the state suggested we include in our comp plan. Right now, we don't know where the wetlands are in the city of Amity, right? We haven't had an expert out to inventory that. And so we put it in here as kind of an aspirational goal. Hopefully, we can either get a grant or we can find some way to to fund when the priority rises to the top, right? To fund like a wetland inventory and then work on putting rules in place to protect that wetland when it's being developed or or when development is occurring nearby. What those exact protections look like are will be, you know, a future discussion. But the goal in the comprehensive plan is just to inventory and protect. Goal six refers to or or deals with air, water and land resources. Similar kind of kind of similar in in environmentally that it's maintaining maintaining the integrity of riparian zones along all waterways and drainage ways, um manage significant natural features for the benefit of the community. Again, inventory and protect wetland resources within the planning area. I had a good question here from, I believe, Commissioner Savage about the definition of impaired, because the the comp plan talks about how Salt Creek, one of the major waterways surrounding Amity, is impaired year round. And and if it is, right, if it is impaired, what is the ultimate goal? So I did a little bit of digging, and impaired can mean a lot of different things, but there's a list of factors out there, right? The EPA releases the list, but it's through the help of um the Oregon Department of Agriculture, which in turn enlists the help of the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. And so they do they do studies on the vegetation and other um factors related to the body of water itself and whether it meets those water quality standards. And it says that impaired signifies that a body of water fails to meet established water quality standards to fully support designated uses such as drinking, swimming, or supporting aquatic life. Question, if if Salt Creek is impaired year round, what is the ultimate goal? I, that is a good one. Salt Creek, it it, to your point, right, it's one of those examples of it's a body of water largely outside of the city's control, right? What what can we exactly do to Salt Creek? My answer is typically that, or or not typically, my answer in this case is that the city will maintain the integrity of riparian zones along all waterways and drainage ways. So I think in this case, it would be looking at the development area along Salt Creek, making sure the vegetation stays there. Um, but also, we, a lot of our stormwater, well, virtually all of our stormwater goes to Salt Creek, right? Stormwater, groundwater during the winter, um we discharge our wastewater effluent to the Salt Creek. Um, and so we're through, there's a lot of different connection points for the city to be involved in the Salt Creek's overall health. And and so I think doing things to make sure that stormwater drainage ways are shaded, pollutant free, uh some of those things to to improve our stormwater, you know, make sure that we're putting water into Salt Creek that would support aquatic life, drinking, swimming. It is really how the city can do it. Can we have an overall impact? I don't know, right? That's that's one of the broader questions that I I can't answer.
I mean, it would seem like you're you're not making it better, but you're not making it worse, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's
My my thought for part of the story is that Salt Creek and the label brand is that all of the part of the salt and the sprays that are used all part of the down to the bottom. So how do you assess that? Is there any just
Um, there's some. I I think it speaks to this question here of, right, who is responsible, who is responsible for this kind of policy objective? There's different things that the city can do. Mostly, we can put restrictions on our side, right? On property similar to yours, right, within the city limits that says, you know, you have to have trees, you have to have the vegetation protecting the Salt Creek. You can't, you know, tear it all down, those kinds of things. As far as it agricultural uses, it gets harder, right? Because that's outside of the city's control. But the city can certainly go, you know, be supporters of the Soil and Water Conservation District. They put out a big report each not each year, I think it's every biennium, so I think it's every two years about the water quality, agricultural use and how it impacts the water quality and what can be done about it. And so the city can certainly support those projects. We we can lend our voice, but yeah, there's a lot of that 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 remains out of outside of our control, right? Because it's not within the city, other than advocacy at the county or advocacy. Yep. Yeah. It it impressed me significantly. So the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, we we talked with them as part of this process about Salt Creek. Um, and they listed, they list Salt Creek as essential salmonid habitat, right? So so salmon and steelhead live in Salt Creek. I I was out there just this morning looking at the water that's not flowing at all, and I'm like, I don't know how anything is living in that, but I I've heard of fishermen catching them, but I I it would be impressive.
Salt Creek runs through our property, and eight years ago, there were fish in there. Well, I mean, where I where I am, I don't even know that there are fish there anymore. Yeah, I might comment just yeah, hydraulic hydraulically, the Willamette Valley has a lot of trib tributaries up in the foothills and so forth, even, you know, going up into the Cascade Mountains, but once you're down here on the valley floor, whether it's the Tewalicon River, which turns into a big long pond in the summer and the water heats up quite a bit, you get algae blooms and things, or something like Salt Creek, Lucky Amute River, the Long Tong up by Eugene. There's a lot of water right now in the Willamette Valley, and the gradient is so low it there just isn't enough water to get anything to flow. The South Yam Hill goes, you know, clear up past the Spirit Mountain Casino and going through Willimina and Sheridan now, it's just kind of one pond after another. And so these kinds of natural situations are really tough in the summer because the water isn't moving, there's not water in the stream to move, and then it heats up and all kinds of things start growing when it's warm water.
Yeah.
So does the does the city have a a plan to engineer its way out of these conditioned water ouches in South Yamhill River? That's our water source, right?
It is.
And we have two cities above us, Sheridan and Willimina. Uh, so we actively monitor the condition of that water there at our intake?
We, I I mean, we do do like sampling, if that's what you're asking, right? Like water quality sampling at our intake right before the water treatment process, but there's also been the been projects. I know Sheridan and and Willimina, they they recently received a grant to do like a a source water protection project, right, which is to go through and look at the South Yamhill River, see where where it all goes, what threats are there, right, whether it's agricultural runoff or or other in industries in Sheridan, and and do that public outreach, do that education about protecting our water. But but projects like that are periodic, right? And we also do things every few years. I want I say every few, it's more like every several. I believe either the county or the state puts together a a source water assessment that looks at the South Yamhill River and and considers some of those factors. As of right now, that's our that's our drinking water source.
So can we monitor our volume discharge in Salt Creek? Our volume?
Yes, yes.
Because that's like a feature, right? As as Amity grows, the volume increases discharge. So then that affects everything downstream. So I suppose Willimina, Sheridan, there there's going to be an increase in volume of effluence, right, over time?
There is.
So you know, my point is that we want a factor in that degradation or improvement. Our goal would be to improve our effluent volume discharge quality over time
Yeah.
for everybody down that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but also in conjunction Sheridan and Willimina. Because we drink their food. We pull their water, but if they discharge, it comes to us, right?
It's true. It's true, yeah.
So engineering their pretty, are they all top of the water quality conditions like Seasville?
We, we took, we take a look at it. I, I wish I could say that our, you know, regional planning, like you pointed out, right? Getting Sheridan and Willimina, our, our previous communities to increase with a more concerted effort. In general, right, DEQ is going to continually step up wastewater effluent requirement.
So we might consider some kind of a joint idea group between us, everybody upstream of us.
Yeah.
And they, they downstream, they, they need to show, but they don't want to affect us, us that much.
Yeah.
So that might be something to consider in the future, you know, that we, not too far.
Yes.
That we would, you know, join with those cities in a comprehensive idea of preserving the South Yam Hill River source.
Yeah. No.
And water, that goes for water supply too, like the condition of the aquifer, the Amity access?
So right now for our, our drinking water, we only pull from the South Yam Hill River. We don't have any current wells or anything like that, they've been kind of decommissioned. Our, our major upgrade right now, and, and I'll get into this a little bit later, to significantly increase the capacity of water that we could produce from the South Yam Hill River. But it didn't address that question of, you know, multiple sources or kind of resilience in that aspect. I've been, Mayor King and myself have been able to attend multiple meetings recently about a regional water discussion, right? And, and that could look a couple of different ways, but those discussions are happening. Albeit they're, they're very limited and, and kind of starting off.
Always says the same thing, the water master, that he's in charge of all, who gets what?
Yes.
And what level of things have to be had.
Yeah.
So yeah, I noticed that there's that disconnect between local controlled water and state controlled water. And state controlled water, that's like a game, right? It's like an old system.
It is, we can certainly talk way more about that. That might be a different discussion.
Preserve its water supply and its resilience, you might use. How do you, how do you increase access? So that, you know, the South Yam Hill goes down these sack, which could be any day, right? We all know that the diesel truck goes over, the South Yam Hill is down. And has that ever occurred, has that ever been taken offline, that doesn't walk or walk?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, I'm certainly not knowing.
Offline, which, is there an alternate source?
Um, there is not, there's not, it, depending on the length of time that it went offline for, right? We have a reservoir that lasts a few days, but ultimately, right, we, we've had issues before in the past where we've lost our water supply for about a week and we brought in bottled water, where we made other emergency measure, or took other emergency response measures. But yeah, but planning for resilience is definitely something in here and under Goal 11 on public facilities, I believe there are policies about properly planning for the future that encourage city staff, planning commissioners, city council to consider those factors.
Okay, so then under land, L C D C, do they, is there a timeline for where you have to say, oh, we're going to, we're going to bring in agricultural land from the outside into our, our programs and our boundary?
I'll, I'll get into that too, that's Goal 14, if it's okay, if I can push that one off till. Okay, that one has quite a bit more context. So jumping back into this, right, we talked about Goal Six. Goal Seven is natural hazards. This just states that the city's going to aim to protect people and property from natural hazards. We're going to identify the natural hazards in the planning area and then direct development away from those. Good examples of that in Amity are floodplain. We have a lot of floodplain in the city of Amity just because the water level is so high during the winter. Similarly, we have a couple of areas with pretty steep slopes, not too much there. But one way that we kind of capture that for the comprehensive plan is a building limitations map. Basically, we put together a map that says, these are the areas where building would be severely limited, either based on steep slopes, down in the floodplain, prone to wildfire, whatever it may look like. So. Goal Eight just talks about recreational needs. It's pretty, pretty fun and open, but really just encourages city, city staff and city leadership to identify property in advance of the need for park sites, minimize travel distance for residents to those recreational opportunities, and then explore opportunities for a diverse range of recreation, whether that's hiking, walking, biking, whatever it looks like. Goal Nine, economic development jumps a little bit into some, some deeper stuff. I, I also want to preface or, or kind of jump back just a little bit, I apologize. This comprehensive plan update had a limited budget and a, and a limited scope. And so we didn't dive too much into economic development, housing, and urbanization, Goal 14, because each of those requires a lot more analysis, a lot more, and, and tends to have a lot of rules from the state about exactly how you do that analysis. But our Goal Nine talks about economic development. We, like I said, we, earlier, we did a economic opportunities analysis in 2015. And that was performed by the COG. I got a couple of questions on that. One of them was that the plan states that 91% of the jobs in Amity are filled by folks who live outside the city. Is there a way to determine why these folks don't live in Amity or what jobs they are? It doesn't dive too deep into it. The economic opportunities analysis pulls on data from the Oregon Employment Department as well as the U S Bureau of the Census. This is the number of jobs that they estimated were in Amity and, and broken down by sector. Local, state, and federal employment at 127, over half of the jobs within Amity. But then they had different numbers for, you know, this isn't the people living in Amity necessarily, this is the jobs that are located here.
Right.
I, I honestly wasn't sure I was following exactly what the economic opportunities analysis said fully in relation to this. So it's definitely something we can look more into. If I'd been around in 2015, I could probably answer everything exactly.
And this was a question that I actually didn't expect you to be able to come up with today. But it, it seems like it's something that ought to be on maybe the city council's plate in terms of like why, or, you know, why is that, why would we, do we have that disparity? And what can we do to encourage people who work here to actually live here? And, you know, maybe there's not a, maybe there's not a way to do that, but I think it's worth the city council taking a look at it.
Yeah, worth considering. Oof, it's confidential.
We'd have, we'd have, we'd have to kill you to tell.
I'd say I can answer that after, I have the, I have the economic, the E O A pulled up on my other computer and it, it gives detail about it.
What was the question?
The confidential industries.
Oh. The state employment data comes in company by company. And for an area that's small, if there's one company and they've only got so many employees, that cannot be released as public information because it gives a person like a competitor a lot of really usable information to help drive that person, that business out of business. So I don't know all the exact details, but I've been involved with an economic opportunity analysis and I, as a planner, had to sign on the dotted line that I promised this secret information will not be distributed. I had to keep it in a locked file. And then once we were all done with the E O A, the Economic Opportunity Analysis Program, and adopted everything, I think I had to hold on to that for five years before I could destroy it, the, the data information.
So like the top, especially the confidential, like less than six times?
Or is that like a well or a shelter that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the cutoff is, but.
I would say I would imagine it's, yeah, just small niche businesses that.
Yeah, if you're in a bigger. And for a small city, basically, every small city is begging for any kind of economic development. Any new jobs typically are welcome. And the economic opportunity analysis step-by-step procedure is really set up for bigger cities where you might say, yeah, we want to emphasize the companies that manufacture the chips that Intel would produce, or the, the companies that manufacture the equipment that Intel would buy to produce their chips. Oh wow, is that right? Well, that's the kinds of companies, there were two or three of them in Toowalatin when I was working at Toowalatin. And it was interesting to see how diverse the jobs and the manufacturing processes can be. So for cities such as Amity, I suppose if you really wanted to work hard to get a data center here that would have a really big ugly looking building and use a whole lot of water to cool the equipment and use tons of electricity and have maybe 20 or 30 employees, you'd say, that sounds good, there's 20 or 30 employees, we, we're glad to have that. And so other types of businesses, just with your zoning, if you don't allow petroleum refineries as a permitted use in your industrial zone, then great, you won't have to worry about petroleum refineries with all the gases and different things that they put in the air. You wouldn't be like Galveston or Houston. So you can do some things like that. But other than that, maybe light metal fabrication, that is a kind of generic description that as long as you have some land zoned industrial and you allow that kind of use in your industrial zone, what more can you do other than try to recruit a small little fabricator to come to your city? But then they're looking at what they look at, yeah. What's the labor market there? How many people in town wouldn't, just even know how to weld? How many of the kids out on the farms that know how to weld are going to want to come in and do that for their career? And okay, then if we can't get enough out of the people who live in Amity, we probably have to get some from Salem, Kaiser, McMinnville, Newburgh, where the bigger blocks of people are. And okay, they're going to have to commute. Okay, it's just, when you're a new business or a business expanding, there's a ton of things that they look at and some of them are really detailed. And when they finally get around to making a decision to locate somewhere, they've been trying their hardest to make sure that that decision is going to be a profitable one. It's not going to be one where that facility in that small town is just a marginal producer. And yeah, boy, I wish we didn't have that one, we could have put it somewhere else and done better. So an E O A for a small city, in my opinion, is kind of a data crunching, number crunching exercise. And it's real hard to try to say if a company does locate in your town, it's due to some policy of the city about whatever that is. Hopefully, in the 2015 effort, there was some policy about working with and supporting the wine industry. Probably don't have a barrel manufacturer here, but those kinds of companies that make the stuff that the wineries use and are used in the vineyards, okay, maybe that's a possibility. There's a few of those people up in Newburgh and McMinnville, probably in Sheridan, or pardon me, Sherwood, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, I just wanted to raise the issue. I mean, I know we're working it up, solve it tonight.
Yeah.
And just the idea that if, you know, if folks are working here and live in someplace else, there's a lot, there could be lots of reasons, but maybe there's an opportunity for us to explore it in the future. That, that was really the only.
Yeah.
Just if I could say one more thing, sorry, some teachers that are here or even administrative people in the school district, they may be living in a bigger city and could have gotten a job in a bigger school district, but they are thinking, yeah, the kids in those bigger cities, they're not like the kids from farms. And they'd rather come here, commute the distance, get paid a little less and have farm kids as the people that they're working with and seeing and interacting with on a daily basis. It's just one of those things, I happen to know a person that did that, so that's why I mentioned it.
Two questions over there, go ahead.
So your guess is to include discharge, something falls in the Yam Hill River. Is there any motivation to put it on agricultural holdings?
Can I, can I pause on that question and come back to it? Is that okay? Yeah, that's part of my update on the public facility, so Goal 11.
So let's just say the comprehensive plan is kind of guide for the future. Under economic development, maybe we should include as a criteria for economic development that whatever economic development comes up as an opportunity, that it, part of the review process should include quality of life for the people, the city, and that would include environmental and social metrics. Like in the case of a data center, that may look like a golden opportunity, but when it comes to quality of life, use of water, a whole bunch of other things, that might make it not such a desirable thing. So under economic development, whatever development takes place here should not adversely affect quality of life for the people. I would say that, okay, case in point, a battery plant, remember that? Boy, that was a, that was a good deal. And then right there, they messed up everything in the wall. So quality of life is important, you know, from hope.
I love your point and quality of life is a really important portion. I actually, this question here just asked for kind of an update on what design review is and how exactly that works. So the planning process in general for new construction, substantial renovation of commercial buildings, that goes through a site design review process. And basically, city staff walk through all of the standards in the Amity Development Code and look at a, a site proposal. We had one this evening, right? An applicant proposed a specific building in a specific location. And Jim, our, our city planner, walked through things like landscaping, parking, what kind of impact is it going to have on traffic in the neighborhood? All of those kinds of questions, we try to capture as much of quality of life as we can. The trick, or I don't want to say the trick, the, the challenge can be, so the state of Oregon requires that we use what they define as clear and objective standards. So we have to, as a community, before an application comes in, like the school building, before that happens, we have to decide as a community, how important are native trees, right? Do we require an applicant to replace them one for one? Are, are those trees important? Are those trees important?
This whole system of checks and balances is really refined and evolved.
Yeah.
I think it's really a good thing. There appears to be enough, you know, enough checks and balances in this to get a balanced voting. But from a policy point of view, you know, that under this development of the economic plan, we want it to reflect the ideals of a population that lives there. So we can be part of the checks and balances process through our input. And that means revising city schedules or, you know, having policies in place to state that. And that would be something we could do as citizens to be part of the checks and balances process. So under economic development, I would say the city family should have a policy that says we shall not affect the quality of life for the people. That's number nine.
Yeah. No, thank you, that's, that's a good comment. I, we try to have places for input throughout the process, but.
This is one of them.
Yeah, this is one of them. Yep.
Yeah, I like what I see, it's really good.
The last question I got here on goal nine. One of the policies says that the city will consider measures to provide incentives for commercial and industrial enterprises to locate in Amity rather than in other communities. Kind of like Jim was talking about, right? How can you, should we pick industries, right, and try to incentivize development here? And maybe you can't pick a specific business, but you say, we need health services, or we need grocery stores, or we need, we need an industry, or we need industrial jobs, right? And then, so the question was, what measures have been considered in the past to provide those incentives? Has the city ever considered temporary tax abatement? My answer is, I'm not aware of any specific incentives that have been considered to induce commercial or industrial enterprises to locate in Amity. If this is something we'd like to consider, and it's certainly, you know, it's in our goals, right, to consider it as an option, I'd be happy to do additional research, come back and talk about that separately. I think there's a lot of options that are out there and available. I've heard of enterprise zones and other things that will, you know, reduce property taxes for the first however many years, encouraging small businesses to be able to start and get going. But yeah, happy to, happy to dive into that. As of right now, I'm not aware of any specific incentives that we've considered before.
And that's, I mean, I asked that question, that's another one where, you know, serving it up to the city council to think about, I think would be really useful.
Yeah.
And I don't think any, honestly, I don't think you need to do that deep of a dive. We have vacant storefronts on trade. I mean, you don't have to like do this big analysis in terms of what's possibly available.
Yeah. No, we have vacant storefronts and a lot of vacant property along trade.
Yeah.
So I, I think it, I think it would absolutely be worth the discussion of how, how do we want to consider incentivizing business there? What does that look like?
And it's not like the city's getting a ton of taxes from it now.
Nope.
You're not giving up a whole lot.
Jumping into goal ten, goal ten talks about housing. Just a couple of, so generally, the policies encourage the city to provide a variety of housing densities and types, encourage upgrades and repairs of existing housing stock, explore ways to ensure residential safety and affordability, and then, like I said before, utilize clear and objective design standards, and then maintain a housing needs analysis. So one of the questions that came up, when was the last housing needs analysis? Amity last performed a housing needs analysis in 2010, when it was preparing for an amendment to its urban growth boundary. So it's been a few years, it is time for another one. We just submitted, Jim, on behalf of the city, Jim wrote up a grant application actually to request funding from the state to help the city with a housing needs analysis. Anvillable inventory, but.
Mm-hmm.
To support kind of those aspects of data analysis. So I, I think it is time we start kind of talking about and prioritizing that a little more. As I'll, I'll talk about it more with the U G B amendment and urbanization, but our city's pretty well built out. And, you know, there's certainly places for infill, places for more dense development. But we can definitely start talking more and more about what kind of housing do we need in Amity? How do we get there? One example, I, I think that's worth bringing up, is A D U's, accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission and City Council recently approved an ordinance to implement standards for A D U's, meaning that they're now allowed within the city with the given set of standards. And so, things like A D U's are things that we, we talk about, we bring back to the community, and we, I know the Planning Commission went through a few times of like, what, what does the community really want, right? Do we want accessible, you know, the, the little housing for mother-in-law units? Do we want, do we want to ensure more privacy? What, what does that need to look like for the community? And I think ultimately, they, they came to a, a good kind of solution and some compromises there, but. Point being, we, we talk about and we look at what housing is available, how we can, how we can incentivize or encourage other types of housing and what that could look like.
So here's a question I have. What about regulating bed and breakfast? You know, as a, you know, some people say that it's a decrease in quality of environment for the neighborhood, if you have a bunch of in and out people. In houses to the point where some cities limit the number, right, the number per block.
Yeah.
So that's just something to consider.
Yeah.
That would come from, again, the quality of life.
At the same time as those A D U standards that I just mentioned, the Planning Commission and City Council did implement short-term rental standards, Airbnb, bed and breakfast kind of thing. Standards governing those, right? And so they, so we now have in our code, specific standards about what those need to look like, what those should have, and then how, how people can develop them. We don't have any specific limitations about frequency of them, just because we haven't had an issue with it yet. But I think the Planning Commission and City Council are, they're going to be attuned to that over the next couple of years to see if, if a big uptick in those short-term rentals picks up and if it's causing a decrease in the community quality of life.
Do you have an inventory of houses that are vacant or derelict?
We don't, we don't have, we don't keep track of a specific inventory of derelict or vacant houses.
Again, by that policy, the city, city members roll and pay down your properties, no other access.
We don't have any, I, I mean, there are, there are different, there are different items like system development charges and stuff that deal with properties that aren't being used as housing or don't have a structure on them. But there's not a specific thing that city staff or that our leadership should do.
We don't come in and do that.
No, no, we don't have any sort of policies like that. One other question related to housing really quick, is talking about the latest inventory of land that can be developed for housing. Again, this was a buildable landsman inventory, and this was also prepared in 2010 while the city is working through the process for an urban growth boundary. Several changes have occurred since 2010, though, that would influence what that buildable land inventory looks like. One major example, recently FEMA announced changes to the National Flood Insurance Program based on an upcoming environmental statement that they've been working on for several years, and it sounds like they're still working on for a couple more years, so we have time. But basically, those changes would significantly limit the development in floodplain areas, more so than is already limited. And so, areas that may have previously been considered buildable in 2010 may not be, or at least may not be at the same density. And so it's, it's worth looking at, again, same thing with the housing needs analysis. We're, we're working towards that, we're, we're looking at grant funding now, but if grant funding just is unavailable over the next several years, we may, you know, prioritize it a little more, right? And say, hey, it's, it's time for the city to really focus on this and, and work towards a buildable land inventory, housing needs analysis, and get a better feel for what our, what our available lands look like and what we need to do about it. Jumping into goal eleven, public facilities. So this generally talks about the city's obligation to provide public safety, police protection, health, educational programs, water, sewer storm, transportation facilities, promoting solid waste disposal and recycling, and facilitate other long-term infrastructure planning. It talks about, you know, internet, communications, basically anything infrastructure-related that you can think of, including community facilities, libraries, fits under goal eleven. One quick question here was, what is adequate health services for the community? What would that look like? My answer was adequate can be defined by the community. It's one of those that we leave just vague enough that it, in some years, right, to, to one planning commission, maybe adequate looks like, oh, well, there's a hospital in McMinnville. We're okay. And we have E M T services locally, right? Other times, maybe there's a big push locally for a, a doctor's office or other more local health services, right? And so really, it's up to the community and to the Planning Commission and City Council what that looks like and what adequate means.
So the E M T services are out of fire?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. So if I have a heart attack, that, they're going to come and help me?
They are.
Yeah, if you're in the fire district.
Yeah.
I only mention this because my wife was a firefighter at Corvallis for several years, decades ago. And there were people outside the city of Corvallis, but they could pay to have Corvallis services. And they would be running down to Monroe in the ambulance to take care of people and get them as quick as they could up to the hospital in Corvallis. So, yeah, if you're in the district or in the city limits, great, but if you're out of the district, well, who knows?
I want to answer your question real quick, I didn't forget. One thing in here, right, wastewater effluent, what do we do with it? Primarily during the winter months, we discharge to Salt Creek. We're allowed to discharge from our lagoons to Salt Creek between November first and April thirtieth. So that's our primary way of getting rid of the effluent. But we do during the summer, behind our lagoons, there's, we have a farm field essentially where we grow tall fescue, and we use our effluent to irrigate that during the summer. It's not a ton. It's a, it's a few million gallons, few million gallons in total, which isn't a lot compared to our overall discharge to the Salt Creek, but it is something. And one thing that we are considering right now, we're, we're working with our engineers through a facility planning study, looking at our wastewater, right? What does it need to look like over the next twenty years? And one of the things that we're considering is, could we acquire more land to, to irrigate with during the summer, right? So that we could kind of clear out of lagoons even more during the summer, hopefully have less discharge during the winter.
So to what degree does capacity figure from your plan? When you're working out, and you ask yourself, how much water, how much discharge, how many schools, to what degree you have control over those future uses of what you're planning ahead?
I'm glad you asked that question, that bounces really well into kind of the next question that I got from our commissioners. The city of Amity has been working on a water treatment plant upgrade for several years now. We started the process in 2017, about, went through a couple of different rounds of design and ultimately started construction, I want to say in 2021. That upgrade to our water treatment plant is going to almost double our capacity. Maybe not quite double in some areas, but in other areas it will, kind of thing. So it will significant, it will allow us to produce significantly more water, right? So previously, we might have been limited by how much drinking water we could produce for the city, especially during the summer, people use it really fast, right? And without imposing restrictions, we're, we're kind of left to whatever we can keep up with during the summer.
But the city, the city can't regulate the amount of development based on water passing?
So we can't. There are tools in place to, to essentially stop or, or limit development. It tends to be a tricky one legally, and, but there are ways to do it, right? If, if I came back to the City Council or the Planning Commission and said, we can't produce any more water, right, don't approve this forty-unit housing development.
Based on water?
Yeah, based, i- i- if it was based on something like that, then we could stop, we, we could do a, do a, a temporary limit on development, but there would be lots of legal challenges and questions about, well, what are you going to do to fix it? What are you going to do to get rid of that, you know, capacity limitation?
So usually, with terms of housing, you're going to just look at future need after whether or not it's, we're capable of producing enough resource or that. You're going to base it on whether we're getting future population needs?
So that's, that's a major factor, but when we go to do a U G B amendment, you do consider things like infrastructure. And I can get into that a little more in just a second. It is, it definitely is. Yeah. Right now, I just wanted to call out, the, the water treatment plant upgrade kind of gets rid of that water limitation for a while. Our current limiting factor on growth is going to be the wastewater side. So that's where we, we're having the biggest challenge. The city's wastewater system faces significant challenges in inflow and infiltration, meaning that during the winter, we get a bunch of extra rainwater in with our sewer, and it overflows our lagoons.
So we're going to get a big fight?
Well, that's, that's not D E Q's answer. And so they, they need us to reduce how much rainwater is getting into our lagoons in the first place.
You have future problems, kind of, to like that food, right?
Yes.
Quality of the food.
Yes.
What should be put on the field? I don't know when that's coming. So it's coming in different places?
We already have a lot of standards on what we can send to Salt Creek and what we can put on the field.
Not microplastics.
That one's not quite there yet, but it's coming soon.
Some places it's there.
It, it's probably coming soon.
Yeah.
Goal twelve just talks about transportation, I won't touch about this one too much, there weren't any questions. We went through a transportation system plan in 2015.
Real quick, I'm sorry, but the question was whether the, it was still on track to be completed in the end of 2025? Was that a yes or a no?
That's why I didn't answer that one, it was, that's complicated. It should be, it really should be.
It has the potential.
It also should have been completed like a year and a half ago.
It's more than aspirational.
It's more than aspirational, we're, we're very close. How fast people are moving is sometimes frustrating to me, but we're getting there. And, you know.
But if not, where we have?
I mean, like I said, a year, year and a half ago is when we should have been done, but.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're coming up on, we're, we're coming up on the finish line. I'm really hoping, you know, spring of 2026, we can have a nice grand opening and invite everybody out to come check it out.
Thank you, sorry.
End of twenty, I, that feels really realistic. End of 20, I, that feels really realistic, but also sometimes I say that and then my engineers disagree with me. Anyway, transportation, we talked about. Goal 13 is energy conservation. Pretty simple goal here, just to conserve energy, identify alternative energy sources if they're available. We can get, I, I've had some people get really into this one, some people not, right? If you're interested in like solar, solar fields and microgrids and community electricity projects, let me know, let's talk. But otherwise, that's pretty aspirational.
I was gonna ask that, how receptive do you think the, the city of Amity would be to not massive amounts of solar fields? But you're one of our zoning, whether it's agriculture or industrial, I don't know how they zone solar, solar fields. But if that would be an option? What it has to be zoned as, and then would we have the space for it? Because essentially, you can do that as, as city land and then, right, use that as a revenue also?
You, you could, yeah, help offset communities, bills.
Is that an LCPC call for UGB for land use?
It's the city's call, but you have to justify it so that if you're appealed through DLCD, your decision will stand. And if you're really off-base, then DLCD itself would, during the process, send you a letter saying, what are you up to? You're off on the wrong track, you're not justifying what you're wanting to do.
Excellent, so that's a check, so now it's, you go to decide on land use?
Yeah, any land use decision in Oregon can be appealed either occasionally to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, but most of them are development-type decisions, and they can be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
So the UGB, you know, to LCPC?
We have to notify them that we're entering into a UGB process. And then when we make the decision, we have to notify them of what we did. And because it's an urban growth boundary thing, their field representative for the Mid-Vallamette Valley will be checking in to see what we're doing and how we're doing it. And if we're saying, yeah, we want to add 1,000 ag, agricultural acres, and we don't do a very good job of justifying that, then right away, the land, the field representative would send a letter saying, doesn't look like you're gonna be able to justify adding 1,000 acres. You know, kind of take a look, maybe go back, do some more work.
So the final plan is not, it's not final?
Well, it is final if no one appeals it. But the more out of the ordinary your UGB decision is, the more parties you will attract, whether it's the Friends of Yamhill County, or Thousand Friends of Oregon, or who knows, just staff at DLCD?
Other than my staff.
Right.
I'm not aware of anything. I'm saying. I think it would absolutely be a possibility. The, the biggest thing you have to remember in Amity is that we're, we're a small crew. So it's, you know, myself and Mona and a couple others taking care of pretty much everything. I, I wholeheartedly support and welcome any ideas like that. I just ask for a little bit more help from the interested party and say, help me find the research, right? Help me, help me put together the idea and let's do it, right? There you go. Yeah, and let me know what you find and happy, happy to help support things like that. Anything that's gonna, yeah, ha- happy, I mean, anything that's gonna make it better for people in Amity, right? The last, so the last thing to talk about, this is the end of, end of what I have. Goal 14, urbanization. This is about the urban growth boundary. This is where, the goal itself in our comp plan just says to provide for an orderly and efficient transition from rural to urban land use. There's a lot of words in there that are pretty subjective. But this really, really governs, or at least it supports the city maintaining an urban growth boundary that both ensures an adequate supply of buildable lands while preserving the surrounding agricultural areas. So the, the question that I got on this one was, has the UGB only been expanded one time? And how behind is Amity relative to surrounding cities? To answer that, to my knowledge, the city of Amity has only expanded its urban growth boundary one time. That was in 2010. It was put together in 1979, right? In 2010, we, the, the city staff at the time decided that we needed to amend our UGB, ask for an expansion. That's a process, kind of like Jim said, where you do a bunch of research, you consider a bunch of different factors, infrastructure being one of them, agricultural lands, there's a few others, but it ties into the, you know, the housing needs analysis, buildable land inventory. You can also use commercial and industrial lands that are available to justify an expansion. Basically though, you have to justify that the city of Amity needs more land and for what purposes. In 2010, approximately 20 acres were brought into the UGB at that time. This included areas on northeast Rice Lane, north of First Street, west of the railroad tracks, and then I believe a couple of properties on the east side, just south of Nursery Street, were brought into the UGB. Not much development has actually happened on those properties since then. On the area northeast of Rice Lane, we had Merlot Street, that they, they split off from that property and developed. So Merlot Street was one of those that, you know, was possible because of that 2010 urban growth boundary. But if you go to the east from there, right, if you go to the northeast from Merlot Street, it gets pretty steep. And so that hill has pretty steep slopes. Questionable how develop, how developable it actually is. Similarly, on that area north of First Street but west of the railroad tracks, the property owners weren't too interested in actually coming into the UGB or being developed. And then a lot of that area was, is in the floodplain, right? Because it's where one of our tributaries hits Salt Creek, and the slopes are pretty steep too. Certainly has some development capacity, but not a ton, especially not if property owners are not interested. The areas on Nursery Street are much flatter, right? They're currently used as farmland. But in that analysis, right, we, there were a number of factors that, that went into it. Just for a little bit of history, at the time, the city proposed adding approximately 20 acres of the property that's just south of Rice Lane. Right now, it's a big poplar field, I don't know if you've driven out Rice Lane. It's a big poplar field right there on the south side of Rice Lane. We proposed adding about the first 20 acres of that 40-acre lot. And ultimately, we, there was a discussion in the county with Friends of Yamhill County, and it was decided that that was a, that that land was prime agriculture land, right? And so we ultimately decided to drop it out of our UGB expansion request. There was also discussion about the area where, where Blue Raven is, right, Laughter Lane. There's a few house, few houses back in there. And so some people's thinking, right, is that, oh, if there's, you know, residential use already there, it makes sense to expand the city that way. The, the infrastructure, where the infrastructure factor came in, the cost to get wastewater services and drinking water services across that bridge to the south was gonna be quite expensive. So ultimately, the city said, we, we can't afford to expand that direction, right? We just can't, can't bring wastewater that way specifically, because to get wastewater upright would be a lift station and a lot of, a lot of effort. So that's, that's where the UGB sits. There are some state guidelines on, you know, you, I, I've often heard that cities are supposed to ensure a 20-year land supply for the next 20 years of development. When I look at Amity, I'm not sure I see that, but if you're counting 20 years of very slow growth, maybe it's there. Depends on how much you're infilling, right? How mu- how much of those little vacant properties or the, the residential properties you're, you know, splitting in half and adding another house, that kind of thing. And there's certainly still room for that, we're, we're seeing plenty of it. Mona and I oversee the building permits, and there's, there's been a number of infill housing or replacements just the last few months, but I'm not sure we have any more properties that would lend themselves to a large housing development. Kind of like Amity Oaks. Amity Oaks kind of took the last
Big chunk.
The last big chunk, so. Any other questions? Yeah?
So you talked about that 20 acres in the southeast, but you said, I mean, all of this ground is prime farm ground?
It is.
Is that the city stance that they don't want to put that into the UGB?
So it's, it's not technically the city stance, it, it's kind of a weird dance. The state wants us to include prime farmland last, if we can help it, right? Have that be the lowest priority. County, kind of the same way, right? But to your point, if you look around Amity, it's all prime farmland, right? We just live in a strong agricultural place, and it's, it's a beautiful farm valley, right? Because it's prime farmland. And so it, by that argument, the city shouldn't expand anywhere. And so you have to, you have to weigh that balance. I, I kind of said here, right, the ideal is to ensure an adequate supply of buildable land while preserving agricultural areas. What that balance looks like is ultimately up to the elected officials, planning commission, city council, and then whether or not we argue that with county, state. I, I will say, the state has had a strong focus on housing, right? Building more and affordable housing. And I think there's been a little bit of a shift at the state level of, you know, maybe, maybe housing has bumped up a little, a little bit in priority, right? And so they may be more.
That's a very accurate assessment.
I'd say it's, it's pretty subjective, right? Just my, just my speculation, but.
That's pretty clear.
Regarding that same property that, that gentleman just mentioned, that was assessed back in 2010 as agricultural, agricultural, sorry, land, right? So we're now, it's been this, this amount of time, and it still hasn't, nothing's happened with it, so it's still available, correct?
The poplar field?
Yes.
Yes, it, yeah, so it was left out of the UGB, because it was considered prime farmland.
But nobody's farming on it, no one's purchased it, it's still available and vacant, and this was all the way back in 2010. Is that the, the same area? I know that there was a permit that was requested for the house at the end of Merlot, and because it was on Rice Lane, it was requesting to be put in the city limits, it could be on the water, on the waterline. But anything past that
Yes.
is septic? It's not, it's considered out of city limits? Once you change that zoning, does that then add it into city limits? And it would have to be part of the, the water?
Since I'm done here, let me see if I can pull up.
I think it can be part of the urban growth boundary and not necessarily be in the city limits.
Yeah, it's just step by step, and there's actually another boundary that's, the urban growth boundary is generally thought to be a 20-year timeframe. There's a thing called urban reserve, it's a 50-year. And the only city that I'm familiar with that has really gone into urban reserves is Newburgh. They established one, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago, and they've expanded it once or twice. And so with an urban reserve, when you get to the point of adding land or, or expanding the urban growth boundary, it has to be in the urban reserve area. So without an urban reserve, I don't know, 99% of the cities in the state don't have an urban reserve, so they're just dealing with an urban growth boundary. So to justify an expansion, is it related to land for jobs, land for parks, land for residential? And whatever it's for, then when you bring it into the urban growth boundary, then an annexation is a totally separate decision. And some people that own land that's in an urban growth boundary, they say, well, yeah, I told you, I'm not interested. I'm a farmer, I want to be a farmer, and so bring me in if you want to, but I'm gonna keep farming forever. And there's even some properties that are in the city limits. Tualatin had a 20-acre farm, and finally, the elderly couple, both of them died, and so the farming stopped. They still had a farm tax deferral on the property, so they were paying virtually nothing in property taxes. The three adult kids said, well, yeah, if we can keep going and get a crop of hay every year, that'll be enough to prove to the state property tax people that we just, that we should keep our farm tax deferral. So that's what they did, and, I don't know, God, it was 10 years after I left Tualatin when finally the kids, I think one of the kids got old enough and died in their early 60s. And so the two remaining kids said, okay, let's sell the farm, because Joe, he was a big opponent of selling, because he loved to go there in the summertime and put up a swing again, and just swing, and think of the good old days when he was a kid here on the farm. So people, if they're in a UGB, they may say, yeah, this is a great investment. Another 20, 30 years from now, when I'm 65 or 70 or even 80 and can't farm anymore, I'll sell it, somebody can develop it, and I'll have enough money, I'll, I don't know, move to Primeville or someplace. But it's one of those things where the private enterprise system has an effect on all of this planning that goes on. Cities can plan to their hearts' content, but until the property owner says, I'm ready to sell, it's a property that's in the commercial zone, in the city limits, has sewer and water and improved streets, well, that property doesn't want to sell.
That's why I'm asking, because we're thinking of the exact same area, like there's a for sale sign on it right now, there has been for a while.
And in Oregon, the property tax system is based not on what you might do with the property, it's what the property is used for.
Right.
And so that's different than a lot of other states, where you're a farmer, and the nearby farmer says, yeah, I'm selling my 500 acres, and it gets developed as a subdivision, the assessor comes over and says, oh, well, you're next to the new subdivision. You could do that too, so your property, the property value is going up, and we're gonna tax you based on that. In Oregon, it doesn't happen that way. You could have a UGB expansion, take in 500 acres of farmland, the farmer next to it, not a change at all, because this land is still being used for farm.
So what are we looking at for that?
So this, really quick, this is the UGB and city map. The blue dotted line, that's the UGB, and the red line is the city limits. So the city, we just annexed a property, and it was right here, this, this little property. But in 2010, the UGB expansion, that's what brought in this area, right? This is north of First Street and west of the railroad tracks. This is the one where the, the floodplain and slopes are pretty steep through here, because the because the salt creek's right over here. But, you know, the property owner didn't really want to develop anyway. This is where the slopes are pretty darn steep. So it'd be tricky. This property, this big property, this is where the city had proposed to bring in about twenty acres. But ultimately, it was considered prime farmland and we opted not to. Down here, we get south of Nursery. Some of these properties are the ones that were brought in instead. And we've slowly been annexing that direction. But, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up and clarify which properties. So we don't have very much that's inside the UGB, but not inside the city limits that would also be considered developable.
That that urban growth boundary, your icon cursor or arrow thing on, that's pretty steep, right?
Yes.
This is? It is.
That's the road that goes up to the Amity Winery and
And and the reservoirs, yep, it's pretty steep. It's got some good slope on it. They pulled out Merlot Street, which was about the only section that really made sense. And even Merlot Street has a pretty good slope on it. Going beyond that, I think you you'd lose a lot of your density. It it would be really, you know, it would be tricky. Somebody'd be on my pay grade.
Somebody will figure it out.
Well, that's a, it's a good example because really land, you know, the more you go up, the better the view is. And what better view than those people that live on the Avady Hills, the Eola Hills, the South Salem Hills, whatever you call it, depending on where you're at? But potentially, someone, if they thought, a residential developer, if they thought there was a market for million dollar homes on elevated land in that urban growth boundary area, they might go ahead and say, yep, I think I'll buy that. Well, I'd make a, oh, gosh, what's the tentative thing where you don't buy, you buy an option?
Speculate on it.
Yeah, you buy an option and say, once I get it annexed, once I get it subdivided approval, then we'll close the deal and I'll pay you the money. But that's what developers developers do. They don't buy it outright without the land use approvals first. So that could be a low density, I don't know, half acre, one acre lots or something with the supposed one million dollar homes with beautiful views of Amity and its Daffodil Festival and the surrounding vineyards and agriculture, you know. Let's hope if that person decides to do that, that there are enough people to buy the number of lots and build the houses to get the view.
Or less hope that doesn't happen. That kind of a society may happen.
Yeah. If you run an example of what didn't happen thirty years ago. Thirty years ago, the city of Sheridan, the hills to the north, and it goes up to eight hundred feet, they added to the UGB, or maybe their original UGB back in the early eighties, went up a third or half of the way on that hillside, and it's still not developed, not even annexed into the city because the people that have a million dollars looking for that great view of the Willamette Valley, they don't want to live in Sheridan. It's too far south or too far west or too whatever. And the infrastructure issue is the city has yet to build a water reservoir higher up on the hill to provide any water service to those higher properties in the UGB. I don't know how high that is, if, I guess the water reservoir is up there?
The water reservoir is above it, but the people that live at the top of the hill don't have good water pressure, so. That that would be a challenge as well, but.
I'm gonna turn into a pumpkin.
I I'm saying, we, if you have any additional comments, if you have any, you know, concerns, this was just a work session, we're not approving anything tonight. But if you have anything about the goals, policies themselves in the comprehensive plan, please let me know. Otherwise, city staff are going to plan to bring it back to the planning commission for approval and recommendation to go to the city council. So we're not amending the UGB at this point. This is just the comprehensive plan, which is just like the goals and policies that kind of are guiding city staff's work. The UGB would be a separate discussion. Mu- much different timeframe, so.
Is there an outreach to the schools where the kids ask them that, what they think about the future?
We, thank you very much for coming. We did some, but it it's always. I I'm saying, we've we've asked them for feedback via surveys and stuff, but it's tricky to get kids too involved, so.
Uh, okay, do we need a motion to adjourn or we just?
Move, yeah.
Well, I would move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second, done, done.